Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to our final pass or parent academy meeting for the year. Our topic tonight is on the next generation of science standards. And with that, the first half we'll be learning about these new standards that are rolling in. And the second part we're breaking up into two sessions. Some of you are here to hear about our high school biology program that we started last year in eighth grade. And others are either in elementary and will be moving with me to look at hands-on practice of the standards. So some of us will be leaving, if you're in the seventh grade presentation, you're going to stay right here. We have some guest speakers today, and I'd like to introduce some of our presenters. First, we have Ally Casper, she's a science teacher here. She's also on the state team for the next generation of science standards as a teacher leader and she is a staff educator. So she goes out to schools and helps train other teachers. And we're so fortunate that she was selected to be trained last year and all of this year by the state. And we actually have her here in our district, so she can work very closely with our teachers, as well as in the elementary school in neighboring areas too. Mrs. Carol Andriesa is a middle school science teacher here. She is also our high school biology teacher. She's high school certified and she teaches biology here in our school. We have Mr. Kevin Doyle here. He is the science supervisor at the high school and also the coordinator for the Science and Math Magna Program. And just kudos to the amazing work they're doing up there. It was voted number three in the country by U.S. News &amp; World Report. And I wish I remembered the number eight, other agency, but it was with families and it became a number one. So it is an incredible math and science program. And we are trying to help feed into these amazing programs that we have at our high school. Mr. Ayataska and Mr. Corbin are here. They are your administrators here at Valley View. And our superintendent, Mr. Steve Forte, the project from technology. Hi, I'm Sandy Pelus, I'm the assistant superintendent. I see many of familiar faces, some of you are new, so thank you for coming tonight. Our first session is going to be with Ms. Casper, and she's going to talk about the next gen. And once we're done there, we're going to break up. And we're going to go into the group that is interested in anything other than seventh grade biology is going to come with. Seventh grade parents, eighth grade biology. Mrs. Casper?
Let me see, does this work? Yeah. Good track, alright. Hi, I'm Ally Casper. I teach sixth grade science at Valley View. I also got asked a couple of years ago, it was two years ago, to be on the state teacher leaders program. Which was, it started out being ten teacher leaders across the state that were chosen from the Science Institute, Veredan, Princeton University, and Rider. And what they did was created like a little cohort, I guess I would say to start off with, where they had teachers throughout the state that would go and start somewhere with the new science standards. And so what that's done for us is we've been able to have professional development, have resources, and kind of get a kickstart on something that's going to be rolled in for, you know, pretty much the whole nation. Whoever, whichever states are going to sign off. So what I'm here to talk to you guys about is the next generation science standards, which you'll see as NGSS often. If you have any questions, feel free to, you know, butt in. Actually, let me wrap this real quick. And I want you to just take a moment and think about why you want your kids to learn science. Does anyone have anything? You want to share? I got asked this one time, that is professional development, and it actually really got known.
Because we want them to be more aware of the place they're living in, the environment.
Okay, great, great. Anyone else?
They enjoy it.
They love it, okay.
More opportunities.
Perfect, meaning like in their career field?
Yeah, career field.
Okay, wonderful. Anything else? Alright, so I'm going to show a quick video that was actually taken from the National Science Teachers Association convention. And it was a girl who went around and said, "Hey, teachers, why do you want kids to learn science?" So I just want to share some of their answers.
Science teachers.
So we're going to ask a few questions.
Michelle, nice to meet you.
Hey.
Good to meet you.
We're here to talk about why teachers think science is so important to learn.
I think science is one place where students really interact with messy problems that don't have easy solutions.
Science is important to learn because the world around us shows these explanations.
Science explains how things work. Science explains why the sky is blue, why we see rainbows.
I'm saying you can get through life without it. That's how I feel, like, like science is just everything.
You learn everyday new things by just doing science.
Science is the one thing because it's ever-changing all the time.
We learn science because it's a great lens for looking at the world and solving problems, looking at things closely, asking questions, collecting data, and trying to draw conclusions about, you know, what it's all about.
Science is literally the most interesting topic on the face of the planet.
It's the best subject there is to learn about.
What science really does is it takes the veil of superficiality off of nature and lets us see what's really inside. And I think for many of us, certainly for me, that's tremendously emotionally satisfying. It gives us a better grip of the world.
Science is awesome.
Science is the spice of life.
Learning science is really learning how to speak a language. It's learning how to think about the world in a meaningful way and to understand better.
Anything is science. So to teach scientists to basically give kids answers to every single problem or question they might have as they grow up and become adults.
And she was just thanking them for giving such a brilliant answer.
So, let me just get back at this real quick. I've done a Science Institute for a week every single year at Veredan through the society teacher leader program. And that's what teachers have said every single session, in a nutshell. I think it kind of says exactly why you want your children to learn science. So it's nice that everyone, you know, is open and also creating a common thread. So, I kind of want to get into now. I'll do the overview of what the standards are, and then I'll go and show you maybe what a few would look like so that you can kind of pick out and see what you would see in a classroom. So, the next generation science standards. They were developed by a team based off of the framework for K-12 science education. What it was, was developed by the National Academies. And it's a book that actually you can go and download for free if you want to read it offline. And what it does is show why kids should learn science and how they learn science. And I think it's on like mep.co, I think that's the, if you want to read it. But what happened was they released in 2000, let me get my dates right, 2010, the first draft. Once they'd released the first draft, and by "they" I mean there's 26 states, scientists, key stakeholders, educators, professors, they released the first draft and said, "Hey, what should we change about this?" So they're not looking to just push it out. They really wanted to go based off of research and make things right. So after 2010 and 2011, they went back, they revised it. And actually, the nice thing about the program that I am in, and actually a bunch of our teachers are in at Denville, is the people who revised it are the people who are, I don't want to call them mentors, I guess I'll call them mentors. So, 2011, 2013, they were released again and said, "Here's our final product." And then in 2014, New Jersey adopted them. So with that, there's a rollout process. And next year is when we are going to see the standards and really be integrated in everything and across the state. And then also you would see them on like a state assessment. So how does that change? What does it do? We'll go over all that, but the main part of it is the framework is based off of three, three things and three dimensions. And those three things are, how do you want kids to learn? What should they be doing? What content do they need to be doing? And how can we connect all that content? So that's the main basis of it. And really to get kids ready for 21st century learning. So, this is put out by the NGSS. And it's going to just go over why is it important? Why should we switch? And make maybe a little bit more info on that, so.
When people are first introduced to the next generation science standards, they're stunned, silenced. And then they're squirming in the chair, and people start to get antsy, but in a positive way. And then people respond with, "Oh my gosh, this is wonderful, this is cool, this is great."
This is an unprecedented time in education in the United States. Standards in themselves, the total doctrine of the next generation, has the power to influence all of the components of the education system.
You see, normally we teach out of context. The biology teacher's teaching here, the mathematics teacher there, you know, the English teacher up here. And then when it's time to synthesize, guess what? We aren't there.
The next generation standards are based upon research, current research, and how students learn.
Science isn't just a mere bunch of facts. You know, science is about the way we think about the world, the way we question the world, the way we communicate about the world. And that piece alone, developing that, is a huge piece of the new standards.
We're really looking at the next generation science standards to propel students into 21st century. So you're looking at college readiness, you're looking at career readiness. Why is now the time for the next generation science standards? We're past the time for the next generation's standards. To be competitive globally, we need to prepare our students.
We have to have as a solid, firm foundation that framework of K-12 science education from the scientific community.
I'm one of the writing team members. And my job is to assist with the development of the standards, which is connected to the framework.
Minnesota is a lead state. So I've, as part of that, I've convened together groups. We have some groups that are working at the viewers of the standards. We have two other groups, one that's sort of dealing with communications with the business and industry side, also looking at what it would take to implement the standards in Minnesota. And then another group who's looking at communications mostly with educators and especially around the framework.
Our standards need to be able to help our students face a world that we're not currently facing right now. We're never going to reach perfection, I don't believe, because the world is changing. We need to continue evolving and changing with our ever-changing world.
When a teacher loves something, the students are going to love it too.
Teachers have to be open-minded, they have to be willing to take a risk. They have to be willing to get messy. They're going to have to be willing to let the students lead a little.
This is a, it's a very hard thing, it's a very critical thing, but it's a very rewarding thing too.
It's awesome to see the kids working together and talking to each other and supporting what they think with evidence, it's a big social media core.
It's going to change the way that I teach. And it's scary and yet at the same time it's exciting. I think it's going to reinvigorate my future.
I'm very excited to see that transition, that change, to actually doing science.
The human capital is the most prized resource that this nation possesses. And we can ill afford the luxury of not developing to its maximum capacity.
So I do actually have to brag a little bit, because I think when people talk about the shift in the standard, they make it seem like it's, or I might even be pretty good at this way, but they make it seem like it's a huge change. And it's something that at Valley View and in Denville, we've all been working towards for a few years now. Since we've kind of heard about the standards, we've been, all, the entire department has been working with professional development and trying to integrate some of the changes little by little, so that everyone becomes comfortable with it. And whether it be teachers, whether it be students, so just it becomes a little bit of different culture. So a shift that you'll be seeing, or you probably have seen it already, is an integration of three things, like I said before. An integration of what students are going to be doing, which is the practices, what students are going to be needing to know, and then how are they going to be connecting everything. So, what does that look like? You probably have seen your kids, you're probably see your kids doing it. So, it looks like this. Kids are going to be needing to be asking questions and defining problems. Asking questions is a scientific term. Defining problems is going to be our engineering concept. So we'll be starting to see a lot more engineering be taking place in the classroom. We have STEM, so our kids have been, you know, practicing that already and gearing up. And if they take science inquiry, also they've been doing it a lot. Developing models and using them. Planning and carrying out investigations. Rather than having a lab that they have to, you know, step by step go through, they're going to be going and planning based off of questions that they've developed and then carrying it out and seeing what it would end up looking like. And then possibly revising it. From that, they should be able to analyze data, interpret it, whether it's in isolation in a certain portion, or they're doing it from their own investigation. They should be able to use computer programs and computate and also put mathematical sense into their science. Construct explanations and then also develop arguments from those explanations. And then in addition, they're going to have to communicate their data. So those things are, it might look to some people like a kind of beefed-up scientific method, but in reality, these are the things that scientists do. And what they're going to continue, what our kids are going to need to do in the future. So, we want our children to problem solve, to communicate. We want them to collaborate with each other and be able to revise their information. We want it to be inquiry-based instruction, where it's not just rote memorization and instead they're applying their knowledge to a situation. And where does this all kind of go into? You'll hear the term a lot of natural phenomenon. So, what I mean by that is kids, well, I'll give you an example. This year I said to my students, I said, "I have a problem." I said, "My problem is every single day I get yelled at by my husband because I leave cups with metal spoons in them everywhere." And they're just like, "What are you talking about?" And I said, "Well, I said, I have this problem. I said, "I leave them everywhere and I get yelled at it." And then so we start saying, "Okay." They're like, "Well, that's weird." And then we start asking questions. They start going, and they're like, "Well, why, why do you leave cups with metal spoons? Why is it a metal spoon?" And I said, "Well, you know, I have a coffee in the morning and I only have so much time to drink my coffee." And then, and this is a natural phenomenon, they go, "Okay, so why isn't it plastic? Well, there's a reason why it's metal." And slowly, 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 we start getting into, hey, there's thermal energy taking place. There's a transfer of energy. I put a metal spoon in my hot coffee because I only have about five minutes to drink it. And if I just let it sit there, it doesn't cool down fast enough. But if I put a metal spoon in my coffee, the heat from the coffee transfers to the cold metal and it cools it down. And that was our, that was our introduction to our thermal energy unit. So, it's something that kids are doing in a daily life. It's explaining your every single day phenomenon. It's talking about rainbows. We go outside and it's raining, and then why is there a rainbow? And it's how can someone, how can a student explain that? So rather than just saying, "Well, it's because of blank," they're doing. And I think that's the most important shift, is using these practices to engage students and not just their own learning, but in the everyday events that happen in their life. So, here are some examples of what you would see. And I'm going to try and show you some examples from K-2 to 3-5 and then to 6-8. And these are performance expectations. So from all those things of practices and also things kids should know, they have to be, I don't want to say held accountable for, but this is what you should see and at the end of their learning of something that they can do. So if you look at K-2, is there anything in the kindergarten grade that you can see that they would actually be doing? It says, "Plan and carry out an investigation to compare the effects of different strengths or different directions of pushes and pulls on the motion of an object." What would a kindergarten need to do? One? Yeah, and for a teacher, this is what we're going to be asking them to do. Plan and carry out an investigation. What they end up planning and carrying out may be pushing a ball in a different place, having a marble go down, you know, a chute. In grade one, what are they going to have to do? This one says, "Make observations to construct an evidence-based account that young plants and animals are alike, but not exactly like their parents." Yeah, they're going to look at pictures, make observations, record them. And then in grade two, these actually, I just want to let you know, are not sequential. I just kind of picked out random practices that they have to do. So don't get worried that this is like step one, step two, step three. But in grade two, we're going to be getting to constructing an argument with evidence. So you're going to see terms like evidence and argument, and these are also terms that they may see in other classes too. So, just wanted to highlight, those are things that they would be needing to do at the end of each grade band. Now, three to five. Grade three is represent data in tables and graphical displays to describe typical weather conditions expected during a particular season, sorry. What would they have to do there? Okay, collect data, good. They're, actually, to be honest with you, sometimes data might be given to them, but they just have to figure out how to organize it. Because sometimes data isn't something that they can easily get. So it has to be teacher-guided, where we could give it to them and then they could figure out what to do with it. And then for grade four, ask questions and predict outcomes about the changes in energy. Again, they're going to be asking questions and they have to go along and test it. And grade five, support an argument that differences in the apparent brightness of the sun compared to other stars is due to relative distances from Earth. Does anyone know what they're looking at there, or what they would be doing? Okay, so star, sun, does anyone know how they can test that?
Flashlight?
Perfect, flashlight. Go close to it, go far away from it. Understand that the apparent brightness of how they perceive it is going to differ based off of their distance to it. Perfect. And then we're going to go into six to eight. So here's where you're going to get, six to eight is a grade band from. So from six to eight, they have to, in eighth grade, be able to do this. But analyze and interpret data on the properties of substances, interact to determine if a chemical reaction has occurred, apply scientific principles to design. So that's something that you're going to be seeing in the engineering component of it. And then also use arguments supported by evidence. So those are the things that they would need to do. In each one of these standards documents, what the teacher gets is the cross-cutting concepts of how all the different material, like, concepts are going to align to each other in patterns that they can see, cause and effect. And then we're also going to see the core ideas, which is going to be their, you know, material that they would have to learn to understand it, and then their practices. So all those things would be there. Alright, and you may have seen this document before, or this image before, because this is something that I know we did last year or two in the past. But this is where Common Core and the NGSS actually overlap. So, Mrs. Andriesa and I were in a workshop the other day, and we were doing it on explanations and arguments. And we're sitting there and I was like, I don't know, I just, I feel like this is something that they do in sixth grade and seventh grade and eighth grade. And because it was the same exact terminology. And we actually emailed our ELI teachers, and they said, "Oh yes, this is exactly what we're doing." The same terminology that they're going to be using in, especially in constructing arguments, is going to be across the board similar. They are going to use evidence, they're going to use making a claim. All those things so that they can not be using skills in isolation. And it really makes it easy because that's how they're going to learn, being able to apply it and being able to use it in multiple different, you know, scenarios. So you'll see that in the middle, well, if you could see, it's a little small. The middle part where all three are going to overlap, they're going to build a strong base of knowledge through content-rich text, read, write, and speak grounded in evidence. And it's no longer a, "Well, it's because of what I think." "Why do you know that?" And then you can also construct a viable arguments and critique reasoning of others, and then engage an argument from evidence. And, do you guys know, I just wanted to clarify to you, does everyone understand that the argument doesn't have to be verbal? It can be written, so it's just something that if they, you know, have, they can make claims, then support it with evidence, and then in the end, they're going to just show their reasoning. So this is something that we're going to use throughout, and it's a nice tool to be able to show where they're going to be overlapping. So, I do want to say thank you, because this was the end of my overview. But does anyone have any questions on like the standards? Or what it would kind of look like in the classroom? No, is that good? Yeah?
I guess I'm just trying to understand the front two.
Okay, so where we go to? So, meeting in the classroom right now, or?
I guess how does it dial in with the high school expectations?
Okay, so well, just to let, I actually should have said this, maybe we need to. The standards that we currently go by, they were readopted in 2009. They have practices integrated in them already. So they have, you know, things that kids are going to be doing. So the transition to what we're going to be working on right now really isn't that far from where, like, what the students are actually going to have to be accomplishing. The transition is more that they're going to be doing more, rather than maybe having to do some kind of rote memorization. For the high school portion of it, I don't know if you, I want to tag team into someone over here.
Sure. One of the things that this is going to help do in communication between the high schools and the middle schools is that the standards that you looked at, especially in six to eight, build upon what they've done in one through two, and then three through five, is a lot of observation, a lot of design, make things happen. When they rolled them out for the high schools, one of the first things they did was they expanded it really to four areas, biochem, physics, and environmental science, whereas the last set that we've been working with was really heavy biology, really heavy environmental science, and some chem and physics. A physics guy that, you know, didn't sit well with me. So, that design, that observation, that developing arguments really just comes right into the wheelhouse of what the next generation science standards want us to do in high school. So it actually parlay's really much nicer than the New Jersey core content curriculum standards from 2009 had done, where it was kind of like, here's what you do in high school, learn this. I mean, in middle school, learn this. Take some tasks, go to high school, now here's a whole new set of stuff you got to do. And this does a much better job of bridging the two schools together, especially in our unique situation where we're a regional high school with four different city districts. So this works very nicely. Is there any question?
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Any of you have a question?
So is this now fully implemented?
Perfect. Next year is going to be like the standards that teachers have to use. That's also when the high school, it goes six through, yeah, through 12, has to have it in their curriculum for next year. It's something that we've actually been having and using for the past two years. So we're a step ahead. But definitely next year, the entire state needs to have it. So after that is when they roll out elementary. But we're also trying to stay, you know, three steps ahead, and we've got, you know, we're working on that too. But this is also something that you would see, instead of MJASK eight, it's going to be based off of the next generation science standards. So where those are on, like Mr. Doyle said, the So where those are on, like Mr. Doyle said, the old standards, the standard, the standards of NGSS will be next year's eighth-grade test, because now science is only tested in grade four and grade eight. So they've been working on it though, so it's not something that, you know, should be out of the blue for them. The process of how they've been doing it is something that they have been receiving. So it's nothing too much to be worried about. So, yep.
Is that going to stay the same? The testing is going to, there's going to be like a test in fourth and eighth grade? That will be the same?
From what we know, right now. Yeah, they're not, and Mr. Doyle, you might not be able to know too, or I'm starting. I know that they're not changing it for now, and I think that it was still going to be paper-based from what I heard.
At least until 2018.
Yeah.
That's the goal, but, well, that's the goal. It's in our hands, literally.
Yeah. So, all right.
It's a one-day assessment.
Yep.
About an hour and a half, and we've done traditionally very well. We have 100% proficiency. So that's amazing. We really have been preparing and getting ready for this.
Anything else? All right, well, thank you. And I think you're going off to the next one.
Thank you, Ms. Casper. We are going to be taking a quick second, you can get water and cookies, and then we're going to break up into our two sections. So if you are here, let me see, how many people are here to hear about the seventh graders applying for the honor, possibly applying for the honors biology? Right, so all of you are going to stay here, and then everybody else are, you're going to come with me, but I'll let you, if you want to grab a water and cookie on your way out, welcome to it. And we're going to move and talk a little bit more about the other grades and what it looks like, the standards.
And reasons why students' families choose to take it, and then there is the application of the second page. So I will leave some extras over at the other table, so if you need one, they will be over there at the end. I'm Carol Antriesa, and you've already met Kevin Doyle as well, from the high school. And so we're going to be answering some questions and providing you with some information about the opportunity for the honors biology program. So first and foremost, the biggest question we usually get is, what is the difference between taking an honors biology class in eighth grade versus, you know, eighth grade general science? You know, what's the big deal? And the little hint, it's not just the advanced class, because a lot of times people think, oh, I want my child to go into the advanced science program, or like anything math, an advanced math, or an advanced language art. It's not just an advanced class. They are basically for going their eighth-grade class, skipping it and going directly into honors biology. So we'll talk a little bit about what that means. So from a standpoint of where they need to be developmentally in eighth grade, the eighth grade textbook, we are going to be switching over with textbooks as the next-generation science standards are rolling out. We're also looking to go into a new series of textbooks that are aligned, that we can work towards the goals with. But currently, and when we switch, we are also moving to smaller books as well. The students are given books like this. So you've probably already seen, you know, the Halt Science and Technology books. The ones that we're moving into are similar in that they are smaller books that they're going to be using on the different topics they cover. So in eighth grade, we typically cover chemistry topics, we cover life science topics. That's our major focus in eighth grade. So in the eighth-grade life science portion, for example, this is one of the books that we use. And we have chapters that are divided in topics about, you know, what are cells, how do cells work, what are their parts? And then we have one about the cell in action. So the best example I can give you is the one that we're currently working on, which is a life science space, which is the cell in action. In the cell in action in eighth grade, what we look at is how a cell functions and how the parts work together. So we'll talk about how things are able to be moved into and out of the cell, and why a cell would want those pieces. We have a section on photosynthesis and respiration, cellular respiration, and we work with mitosis. So in that chapter, we cover a broad amount of it. It's like scratching the surface. And then that way, when they move into high school biology, whether it's their freshman year or sophomore year, they have like a foundation. It's like building your house. You want to start the foundation, get it strong. So when they move into it, they have a familiarity to it, and they feel comfortable moving into it. So that's one chapter that we cover in eighth grade with our general eighth-grade science students. If we compare that then to the honors biology program, so this textbook that we use with the eighth graders is at an eighth-grade level, the reading is geared towards an eighth-grade student, you know, the pictures, the images. The book that we are using is a college reading level. So students who are choosing to go into the honors biology program, they need to be at a reading level that is going to be able to use, be able to read and interpret diagrams at a much higher reading level. So that's first and foremost that students might be a little surprised at, you know, like when they're looking at this book compared to their regular book. It's a much more advanced reading level. So I'll pass around the textbook that my eighth graders are currently using right now, so you can kind of see. The amount of information, the quantity of information is much different than what you would see in the eighth-grade book that your students should be bringing home. So if you want to pass that around, it gives you a good gauge as to what students are going to be expected to be able to read and interpret and learn from and analyze. Our studies are much more in-depth, where in eighth-grade science, we scratched the surface, lay the foundation. When we're moving into the honors biology program, we are now going much more in-depth. So the chapter on into and out of the cell in the eighth grade is really three separate chapters in honors biology, actually four separate chapters in honors biology. So one of those chapters, for example, is chapter six, how cells harvest energy. So where in eighth grade right now, we just learned about cellular respiration, and we talked about how some cells are going to be using oxygen, and some cells might not use them, it's called fermentation. And we introduced the concept, we'll spend two or three days on that, and we move on. In biology, we have a whole chapter on cellular respiration, and the vocabulary is much more advanced, the chemistry basis is much more advanced as well. So it's almost like a mixture of the chemistry and bio, like a biochem sort of class, because they have to be familiar with how chemistry works, how chemicals work, and how those interactions work together. So for example, for aerobic respiration in the biology class, we use terms like glycolysis and the TCA cycle, the electron transport chain. We use much higher-level vocabulary, and we looked specifically at how the cell does those parts, or does those activities, and how they fit in, and why the cell would want to do that. I did try to incorporate some of the next-generation science standards, because like Ms. Casper, I attended a lot of those workshops as well at Raritan Valley. So I tried to have the students look at some of the models, look at some of the diagrams, and start to interpret what's going on, and why is that important for the cell, and be able to explain. So for example, when we did that, I had the students research one specific aspect of cellular respiration, and then they had to have an argument about why that particular section is important for the cell, and what makes that essential for cellular respiration. And they had a debate between each other about mine is much more important because it does this, this, and this, and they had to counterbalance what other students were saying. So it was a way for them to be able to research it, understand it, analyze it, and be able to communicate with each other as to how those pieces fit together. I don't want it to just be, here's the information, memorize it, learn it, let's move on. I want them to be able to express it, explain it, and interpret what they're seeing. So that's just an example of one of the chapters that we cover. So I asked my eighth graders in the biology class at one point, you know, what made you sign up? Why were you on board with this program? And currently, there's 12 students in the class. I'll talk a little bit about how you would apply and what they had to do to get into the course. And they gave me a variety of reasons. You'll see, it's much more than 12 answers, because some of the students gave multiple responses as to what made them interested. What I found striking is that two of them tied in first places, these students were ones who were very interested in science, and they loved science, they had a passion for it. This was something that they knew in class, they were, they were active, they were asking questions, they wanted to know more. And this was like another step in a direction to increase their knowledge. The other is was because they really, they felt that this would open the door for more opportunities, possibly in high school, to get to higher-level classes. Maybe they have older brothers or sisters who are in AP classes, or who are taking higher-level courses, and they were interested, and they said, you know what, I think I could do that as well. In a close second place to them was, well, they wanted a personal challenge. These were students who, they are driven to go further, and they really wanted to extend themselves. So a lot of them identified that as being, you know, I want to challenge myself. Maybe regular science, I loved it, it was great, but I think it could be harder, and I just, I want to accept that, and I want to move on. And then last, only two students said it, it was more towards career aspirations, that they, one of the students said, you know, I want to go into a medical career, so therefore, I think this is going to help me possibly get into that direction. But, you know, my example for my students is, if you had asked me, you know, in eighth grade, what'd you want to do? I wanted to be a poet, and I wanted to write stories for children, and, you know, then I took biology in high school, and I said, wow, I want to go into biology. And that's what I wanted to major in, and that's when I became passionate. So it is a hard question to ask your children, you know, as a seventh grader, you know, where is this going to take you, and why do you want to do this course? I mean, that's something that you would want to ask them as well. You know, are you passionate about, do you love it? Is it something that you want to extend yourself? All right? So what should you consider when you're making this with your child? Some questions and some things that you need to be familiar with as well. The high school requires, at the end of the course, that the students accrue 240 points. Would you like to talk about the 240 rule?
So the 240 rule basically is made up of points you can get from the GPA, so you can get 100 points there, and twice your score on the final exam that has already been worked out by the high school teachers and given to Ms. Andres, Ms. Andresa, so that you can go ahead and get to the students at the end of the term. So we double the final, and now the GPA, put together, students must get at least a 240 in order to be, to place out of, if you will, biology one honors, and go right into chemistry one honors.
Now, if a student does not hit the 240 rule, then they're not going to be able to move on to that honors chemistry. But what would be, would they just go into biology again, or would they just go into environmental?
They would go to biology one honors.
All right, so just keep that in mind as well, that those points are going to matter. If they use the same rule that they, that is used in the math classes with Algebra One, to be able to move on to the next level, the Algebra One students also have to have the 240 points. So for the eighth graders, when we talked about this, they're like, oh yeah, we do that for math. You know, we understand what needs to be done. Second thing you should consider is freshman-year science, where are they going to head? So they would be moving into honors chemistry freshman year once they hit the 240 points. But that depends on the school they choose to go to. This is set up between Denville and Morris Hills Regional District, the Magna Program, the academies. So this is arranged between, you know, this partnership that we have since we're ascending district. I do have some students, and I'll show you, you know, where some students are considering going in the future, so you have an idea, you know, what ultimately happened. But it depends on the school. I have some students who are planning on going to private school, and it's up in the air for them as to whether or not the private school that they are applying to is going to accept this as a high school-level class. So I'm in communication with them, their families, if they need me to talk to the high schools that they're going to, or if they need to talk to Mr. Doyle as well about the curriculum. I'm using the curriculum that the high school is using, I, you know, I'm using the materials that the high school is using, getting them prepared. But the new high schools that they're choosing to go to may or may not, if it is not part of the district, may or may not decide to accept it as an actual class to move them onward. High school courses. After taking this, another question that had come up last year as people were considering, students were considering, oh, you know, if I take the honors bio now, that means I won't have to take biology in high school, all we have to, you know, I'll get credits for high school. Credits are not offered for the class. So students who go into this are not getting high school credits. They will still be required to take three years of high school courses, and they will have to take a life science, because they will ultimately need to take the DCT, which is a state-mandated test, that's the biology competency test, and it cannot be taken at Valley View. This is a high school-administered test, the high schools have to give it. So when they get to high school, they will need to take a life science. They could take AP Biology, or some of the other.
They could take an AP Physiology or AP Biology, that's what's settled, was a requirement, five credits. And as we're saying this too, I want you to understand that we vetted this whole process through the State Department of Education. This is not our rules. As we went through the whole process and put this together, we consulted with Michael Heinz and the Science Department and the NJ DOE, and they said, absolutely not, this cannot count for any high school credit. And absolutely, students must take five credits of life sciences between grades nine and 12, and they must take the DCT exam, no ifs ands or buts. So we're doing this in a way that's compliant with the state and the expectations of the state.
And a lot of students, I'm sure, you know, with a desire to move further, are going to be interested in taking some of the AP classes, including the AP Biology. So that will be an opportunity for them to take those classes at an earlier pace than if they went the traditional route into biology freshman year. So high school opportunities, where could they possibly go with this course? You know, if you're looking ahead to private school, I mentioned, I had several students apply to different private schools. The IB program is housed at Morris Knolls. Academy of Math, Science, and Engineering, Morris Hills, and the Magna Program are both at Morris Hills. So if your children choose to go into that, and you'll learn more about it when they go into eighth grade, and they go on, you know, tours to the high schools, if they choose to go that route, they would be going to Morris Hills instead of Morris Knolls. And then if they want to go to the VOTEC school, I have a student who's planning to go to VOTEC, but not through the Academy of Math, Science, and Engineering, he wanted to go into one of their other programs. That's accepted. And then, of course, Morris Knolls. So I was also curious, you know, how many of you, as my students, are going to be going into any of these programs? And this is what they told me, two of them are going to private schools next year. Again, they're uncertain whether or not they're going to be able to get credit, but some of the logic behind their choosing to do honors bio freshman in eighth grade is that they feel that it's going to lay a foundation, so that when they take honors bio in the private school, it's like they've already had like a private tutoring session, and then they move on, and it'll be a little bit easier, so it'll help raise their GPA, I guess, and it'll make it easier for them to flow through. Two are choosing to go to the IB program, one is going to the Academy, one is going to VOTEC, and six are going to Morris Knolls. So majority of them are choosing to just go into Morris Knolls, go into honors chem freshman year, and see where it takes them.
What's the IB program? What is the International Baccalaureate Program? It's a worldwide program, basically it's developed in the late 60s or early 70s for students, families who would be, who business and who work, relocated throughout the world all the time, so that they would have a common curriculum to be able to use. There are 11 schools in the state of New Jersey that have the IB program. And it's really a program that's more about getting into six different areas, science, mathematics, the arts, English, history, and more language. It's pretty rigorous, it's very in-depth. It's like a lot of everything. It's kind of an interesting type of thing.
I believe on your, the sheets, yeah, on the sheets that we gave you, they do give a little bit of a breakdown as to general education, math, science, Magna Program, IB Program, it should be on the back, yep, Science Academy for Math, Science, and Engineering. It gives you a little bit of background information as well. If your child is interested in pursuing one of those programs, what they would be taking their freshman year. So for example, the Academy for Math, Science, and Engineering, freshman year, they'd be taking AP Physics One anyway, and then they would take Academy Chemistry as a sophomore and AP Biology as a junior. So it'll give you an idea of the different programs and the different routes they can take, once they move into high school, if they choose to take one of the specialized schools, all right, or if they decide to go a traditional route through Morris Knolls, which, as you see, a lot of my students chose to do. Okay, so how are they selected? So this is the selection process, so you have an idea of what they're going to have to do. First, we make sure that they have the eighth-grade advanced prerequisite of Algebra One or Geometry. So I have, I believe, one or two of my students currently took Algebra One over the summer so that they could be in Geometry currently in eighth grade. So they do not have to be in Geometry, they could just be in Algebra One in eighth grade in order to have that as a prerequisite. That's the same that they would have if they went into honors biology in high school. So they have to have that prerequisite, because it helps align them not just with biology, but with... but with further classes in Chemistry and Physics and their math core requisites. We take the placement test in May, the date is in your book, it is Tuesday, May 24th. That's after school. So, if a student is interested in taking this, that's the day they would stay after. They take the lay bus home, they take the test and the test is not something they're really going to be able to study for per se. It's, I'm not testing them on, do you know Biology? Because, you know, why would you be taking Biology then if you already know all the answers to Biology? But it's more about how well can you interpret science, understand science, use logic through science problems? How well can you write? So, there's an open-ended prompt where they have to analyze and interpret some information and then, again, use an argument to back up a logical scientific reason as to why they selected their choice. We also are going to be looking at previous years, not just seventh grade but also sixth grade, see how consistent, we're looking for consistency, students who are consistently doing well across the board. You know, if the student's grade fluctuates in, in seventh grade, there's a little bit of a concern of, okay, this is, you're skipping eighth grade science and you were fluctuating in regular seventh grade science, so is this going to be the right place for you in order to lay the foundation to go to high school? So, that's something to consider. And last, we do ask these science teachers for recommendations. It's a general checklist about different behaviors that they see in class. It's, it's something that they take very seriously and they really look at each individual student who's applying and kind of evaluate, is this going to be a good place for them as well based on what we've seen in terms of their desire and their strengths. Some other expectations that, for myself, that I see in my students and that I think are really important, dedication, because students who choose to take this are going to be required to give up three recesses a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. They come from lunchtime, they eat their lunch first half of lunch and during the recess they come to my class, so we have a period and a half. That way, if we have a lab that's a little bit more expensive, we're able to get into it because in a 43-minute period, it's different than a block schedule like they'd have in high school. This gives us the opportunity to allow them to move at the correct pace and not try to rush through just to get through the lab. So, I can do labs, similar labs to what they do at the high school or the same labs that they do at the high school and then be able to work with them and talk to them about what they're seeing and observing. Self-motivation, a lot of times students have to work outside of class because this is a rigorous-paced course. So, again, I ask my students, what are some of the things that you think are important? And, you know, I listen to their conversations with each other as they come in. They watch a lot of videos. I provide them with some videos and online resources so that outside of school, if they're stuck on something, they have something to tap into, a video, a website, something that is going to support what we're doing or that I could give them beforehand. So, when they come into school, we could talk about what they saw in the video and how does it relate and what examples did you see and, and let's just get down to the nitty-gritty now and maybe do an activity about it rather than just lecture through it. Online resources, I have a lot of online resources. If you check out my webpage and you go to the tab on honors Biology, the unit outlines for honors Biology, you'll see lots of resources. Students have set up on their own chat groups and study groups outside of school. They'll come in and say, oh yeah, you know, I, I was talking to so-and-so yesterday on our chat group and they shared with me a Quizlet that they made and then I shared with them a great link to whatever. These are students who are self-motivated and driven to extend themselves outside of school. So, they set up these chat groups all on their own and then they come in and they're like, oh yeah, we studied last night, we did this and this and this and this and this. And they appreciate each other a lot, they, they really lean on each other a lot. So, if there's somebody who is strong in an area, they'll reach out to them in the chat group online and say, hey, you know, could you explain this to me? I wasn't sure what, you know, what this example was about. And they'll reach out to each other and they're very helpful and very supportive of each other. It's a really amazing team that's in this course. Ambition, keep in mind, students who are taking this are taking this because they want to take other advanced sciences as they approach high school. So, they want to go into the AP courses and they want to take more science. It's not, I just want to take my three years of science and be done. This is students who are interested in taking higher levels more because they just have that drive and they love the subject area. So, what did they say about the course in general so far? We're halfway through the year. This is the first year we've done it, so we're halfway through. These are some of their quotes, exactly, ask questions, study, take good notes. You have to be hardworking and dedicated, that's out of an eighth grader's mouth. You need a firm will and a good sense of direction, otherwise it's fun. I liked that one. Be ready for a course harder than you thought. That was, that was another one that surprised me. Stay focused. And be prepared to spend some days just reading the textbook, it will help you understand. So, these are students who take that textbook, they lug it home and they read, 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 read and then they come in there with their questions. They always come with loads of questions about, well, what about this? And I read this and I saw this and I saw this video. So, these are students who are doing a lot more outside of school and then they come inside and we work with what their, what their interests are, what they are curious about. We try to tie it into what we're doing so that we're, we're moving through the curriculum at a good pace and I'm in contact with one of the high school teachers at Morris Hills. She's very, very helpful so that if I want to see pacing-wise, you know, where am I versus where are you? She lets me know, she shares resources with me, I've met with her two times so I can observe one of her classes. So, it's a nice partnership between Denville and the Magnet Program. So, that's it from me and thank you so much for your interest. And of course, if you have any questions for us, we'd be more than willing to, you know, field some questions about your concerns or anything else. Yes?
The test that you take, is that like a status?
Which test? The test, the placement test or at the end?
Yeah, the, the placement.
The placement test is kind of a smorgasbord of different topics that we put together to see how ready students are. It's not meant at any rate to be an easy test. Students struggled through it last year. That's because we're trying to choose students who are ready for this. So, and, and who are, think like a scientist and think logically and critically and who are able to apply. So, it consisted of some multiple choice, it consisted of a major open-ended essay so that we have the writing component in there as well as the, being able to come up with a claim and evidence and reasoning behind it and express themselves thoroughly. So, it was a long test, it took most of them the full hour after school. And that's what they get, they get an hour, whatever they finish, that's it, it's lay bus.
How many, how many took the test?
Forty-three, there's twelve, twelve.
Is that because there's only 12 in the class? Or because the other?
Last year, it was, you know, it was the first year, you know, we, we looked at this being the pilot year, you know, who's ready for it. It is, it is advanced, you know, we're, we're asking students to forego their eighth grade class, which lays that foundation, and jump straight into, you know, an advanced level science. And some of the students are, you know, really gung-ho and they're ready for it and they enjoy it.
But was it limited to 12?
No, that's.
So, if you had 28 kids pass the test and qualify, you would have had two classes, split in half?
If, if we needed to do that, we never.
I'm just, I'm just asking.
I think a good thing to mention too is that this group of kids, the seventh grade, is our first group that took, some of them took Algebra One in the seventh grade. So, they're, so it's, it's a different cohort. We may have more kids eligible for this than we did last year. So, we've had kids taking Geometry, that means they've taken, they've take, they've done something to take Algebra One, whether with us or outside, and took Geometry in eighth grade. We've had them before, we have a couple of kids this year, we have a couple of kids last year. This is our first big group of 25-plus kids, actually 30 kids right now that have taken Algebra One in seventh grade and are algebra, for Algebra, Geometry in eighth. And the reason why I bring this up is it's a different mindset now. It's, it's, you're taking a high school class in seventh grade basically and, and then you're taking another high school class in eighth grade and on top of it, you're taking an honors class in eighth grade. So, we would, we would, it'll be difficult for us to run two, to be honest with you because the hardest part is with the whole thing. We have one teacher, first of all, I don't know if everybody knows this, but we're lucky because we have Mrs. Andreas and Mrs. Andreas is high school certified and we need the high school certified person to teach this. Now, we are working on moving high school certified teachers into the middle school, but not all of our high school science, middle school science teachers have a high school cert in bio. So, she has this high school bio cert, therefore we can offer this class. But yeah, to answer your question, running two would be tough. We just don't, we, we don't have two teachers and we, then we'd have to have two of these kind of hybrids where the kids are taking the, missing some of their, some of their, their recess, so. This is, this, another thing I wanted to say is, we have not found this class anywhere else. It's a pretty great opportunity for the right kid. It's the most important thing, this is not for every kid, but if it's the right kid, it's a great opportunity. But it can also not be so good for the kid who's not ready for it. That's why, you know, maybe even we come across kind of like, you know, really think about this before you come because it's, it is a big, like you said, it's a college class, it's a high school honors bio class. I mean, you know, it's, it's the big leagues now and you're only in eighth grade. So, it's a great opportunity for the right kid, is what we're really trying to get to.
What happens if your kid gets into the class and he starts out okay and then realizes that it's way over their head? Is there an opportunity to step them back?
We didn't have that, right?
We didn't have any.
We didn't have it, but I don't think there's a reason.
We started at the 12 and they, they've been going strong.
Is it a possibility?
I don't think there's a reason why we wouldn't be able to accommodate that.
There is another eighth grade class, a regular eighth grade class that runs at that period. So, it probably would be easy for them to just transition into another teacher's room at that period.
That is why, that is why the standard is very high for admission. It really is, it has to be.
When the class was designed, when we were working with them, one of the things that we had all said together was, we don't want to set up a really talented kid to fail. And that's hugely important. If you look into high school, we've never had a person in our high school or any of our high schools or any of our programs ever take Biology on the high school level before, much less honors Biology. None of our kids who've gone to MIT, none of our kids who've gone to Harvard and Princeton to study Biology or Chemistry or Physics ever took Biology in eighth grade. So, even if, if a really talented kid doesn't get into the program for whatever reason, they have a tremendous amount of opportunities, I can't stress that enough. I was pretty successful in school and pretty successful in college. I would not have been prepared for this program when I was here, not, not, not in the same, not in the same ballpark, you know, and that's okay. That's the other, that's okay. You know, if you realize that this program's not for you, you, the student doesn't do well enough on the test, that's really okay. There's only, actually none of our Magnet acceptance kids ever took this class, including this year. Only one kid who ever went to the Academy ever took this class. So, you know, it, it's okay. I, I hope you all leave, walking out here with that. Sometimes we have, you know, questions when they come to high school, oh my goodness, not going to be in this class, that's, that's the end. And that's not, not even close.
Basically, an unbelievable thing that we put together, I mean, I really can't stress that enough, but again, really for that, that kid, that kid that can handle this stuff at that, at that age. You know, and you know my kids came through here, this is not a class for my kids, I don't think it will be. And, and, but that's, that doesn't mean we shouldn't have the opportunity for the right kid. You know, we have a lot of opportunities for kids at the other end of the spectrum and here's an opportunity for the kids at the top of the spectrum that we just don't have, that we didn't have before. And I do like the fact that we have seven high school classes in the middle school now, which is kind of cool for, for our, for our district. It's, it's nice. And nobody has this. It's funny because I bring this up to other people, I'm like, you guys should look at this and nobody wants to touch it. And I don't really understand why, it makes so much sense to advance somebody who's meant to be advanced. It's probably because they're afraid people will get in that shouldn't be in it, that's the problem. But we really did a nice job of selecting the kids, right?
Yeah, they're, they're a really tight-knit group of students who, they just love to help each other and they love to extend it. I mean, they'll, they'll come in with loads of questions and I'm just talking like random questions that make no sense, like topic-relevant questions, well, what about this? I've seen, I've read an article about this. These are students who read about science outside of school, who search for videos about science outside of school, who will come in and say, hey, did you, did you see this? Did you see this amazing thing going on in science? And look how it relates to what we're doing in school. So, these are students who have a love and a deep passion. Like I said, when I was in eighth grade, that would not have been me because I didn't love science until I was a sophomore. And, you know, I didn't take Biology until I was a sophomore. And I went on to major in Biology and Education and minor in Chem when I was in college. So, you know, different lights go on for different kids at different points. So, you have to look at it in terms of, you know, is this their deep passion that they really love and they want to extend?
How many kids maximum would you have in the class?
We don't really, we never, we never set, we never, we never set, you know, a, a ceiling for that, we don't have like a set number. You know, we threw around different numbers last year too, was it going to be five? Was it going to be 10? You know, how, how are we going to, you know, cut off that limit in terms of scores and placement? So, you know, we, we came to the conclusion that these 12 students seem to excel in multiple aspects. They did well on the test, they did, they were highly recommended by their, their teachers and they were consistent in their grades throughout the year. These were students who were scoring A pluses and As throughout the year. They, you know, it wasn't like, okay, I got a B plus here, okay, let's try it for the honors bio. These were students who were consistent the whole year.
I always like to tell people too, I, I can make as good of an argument why you shouldn't take this as why you shouldn't. Like for your kid who's involved in the play and sports and all that other stuff, be a kid, you know, that's fine. You know, that's what we want to really explain. I think another thing I really want you to stress too is ask questions. And the second thing is involve your kid in this decision. Ask them if they really want to give up their recess. Maybe, maybe recess is the big thing for them and it, and it keeps their sanity, you know, so, so involve them and ask as many questions of us as you have before you make the decision.
And I did have a student last year who was registered to take the test, handed in the sheet, the day the test came and he came to me and he said, I'm not going to take the test. I think between everything that I'm doing outside of school, I'm not going to have enough time to prepare myself and I don't want to do that to myself. So, he made that decision with his family to say, you know what, I'm active in this sport and this and this and yes, I'm, I'm intelligent and I know I can do this if I didn't have all that other stuff going on, but I want to be able to continue in my other passions and my other interests. You know, students who are in this class will tell me, yeah, I studied a couple hours last night just for this one quiz, you know, and they, they enjoy doing that, you know, and they're, they're interested in doing that and they like to reach out to each other and work collaboratively online with each other. So, they really do lean on each other and help each other out a lot of the time. Not to say that I'm not there for them, but they like to be able to talk to each other and hash it, hash it out with each other and hear what each other has to say and be able to pull the best out of each other. It's nice.
How was the performance of the kids in terms of the grades?
They're doing really well. I mean, you know, every once in a while, somebody hits a speed bump, you know, we've had topics that for some students it was like, oh man, that was really tough. And then we just moved into topics in genetics. And one student who was struggling on like the chemistry aspects in the beginning with like functional groups and carbohydrates and all that stuff, soon as we hit into that, he's like, I love this so much. So, you know, there's different parts of Biology as well, you know, you have your strengths and your weaknesses, you know, so he's, he's excited that we're moving into this other area and then, you know, there's some, there's some environmental science as well as we get going on to like natural selection and evolution. Once we hit there, I'm sure other students are going to be having like a sparking light into, you know, oh, I never thought of this and how about that? So, there's different areas that we go, it's like a, it's like a path that we're taking together because this is the first year we're doing this here, so it's exciting. And I do ask them for feedback too, like, hey, what was your favorite activity so far? And they're able to say, this was great, this was great, this was great. Oh, make sure you do this with next year's class. They'll actually come out and tell me that, really like, that was awesome, you've got to do that next year. And, you know, as for the Biology and versus the eighth grade, if there are things in eighth grade that we cover that I feel are important for them as an experience to do, I do, I, I'll pull that in when I can. So, for example, they don't do a frog dissection in honors Biology, but we do the frog dissection in eighth grade and I didn't want them to miss out on that opportunity. So, as we were talking about organs and systems and cells and where they all fit in, I did So as we were talking about organs and systems and cells and where they all fit in, I did the frog dissection with them. Because I don't want them to miss out on something that is really exciting for the eighth graders as well and it still keeps us on track. It's like the best of, you know, eighth grade, it's thrown in with the honors Biology and what we need to do there as well. Yes?
Apparently they don't get credit for, for high school, but does it show up on their high school transcript? Like, do they go to college?
Nope.
So they never see the dates of?
Nope.
They'd be able to defer because if they successfully pass, I mean, you're going to have to probably ask a question, why did they not take Bio in high school?
Or they're, or they're going to say, oh my goodness, he took Chem honors as a freshman, that's awesome. From our school, we like that. Because you know, how many kids are they getting to come in? You know, colleges, yeah, they look at grades, but really, they look at the, the level of the classes that you're taking and they go all the way back. And they see you taking hard classes from the beginning.
But they won't question where was?
No, because they'll know they're from New Jersey and they know how stringent the requirements are in New Jersey and they'll see that they have a degree from New Jersey and that they've taken a life science course, which would probably be, if they're really succeeding, AP Biology.
And how common is it for a kid not to take honors Bio and only take AP Biology? Is that almost never?
Yeah, never. It's almost, it's impossible.
So then you'd have a kid under transcript who would only have AP Bio. It's a pretty, pretty advanced level, you know, we're taking it basically now.
Especially with the changes in May two or three years ago, so it's going to look really good.
It's a lot to think about. A lot to talk about with your children.
No, this class is the one that set you up for the AP Biology course. This is why we're not allowing the freshmen coming in to take AP Biology since they've just taken Bio honors, because there's so many other things that they really have to learn before they can master that class. So they, if they do well in Chemistry honors as a freshman, they can take AP Biology as a sophomore, which is very rare to happen.
Well, I'm very happy that we have our Morris Knolls participation. It's different when you all have the same district and we have this kind of cooperation. So they were, they were on board with this right away from the idea. And they actually provided all the materials, all the books and things came from there. So it's a great partnership and we're glad everybody came out, it's a nice crowd. And again, ask as many questions as you have.
So if you have, like, just the, one kid takes like science and he gets like an A plus and someone who takes this course and he gets like a B minus, so how do you kind of perceive the two kids?
I wouldn't. I never use one measure when I try to perceive a kid. I would look at a whole bunch of other things. And honestly, none of us do that. And that's why we work well together. We, we don't look at just one thing.